United States of America and through the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting agenda for Tuesday, May 7, 2024. The time is now 7:03. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, notice of this meeting was published in the December 7, 2023 issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracca. Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
Old President, Mayor.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Yes, we have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for April 2, 2024, and April 16, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for minutes, Mayor.
Communications, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three this evening. Nutley High School Volleyball Booster Club, Inc., has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold a raffle on Sunday, June 2, at 44 Bark Park Avenue, between the hours of 12 and 4. The Nutley Educational Foundation has submitted an application for a social affair permit to hold their SIP, Saber, and Support fundraiser and grant award recognition event on Tuesday, June 11, 2024, from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM at the Nutley Museum, located at 65 Church Street. And Conca Brothers, the Old Canal Inn, has submitted an application for an extension of premises to hold an event on Thursday, June 8, 2024, from 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM at 2 East Passake Avenue. That's it for communications. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
I just want to clarify, June 8 is a Saturday this year, but I.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have some guests here tonight, so I'm going to turn it over, the first part, over to Commissioner Tucci to read the resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. You know, it's only fitting that this, which is the last regular meeting for this sitting Board of Commissioners, all right, do it by honoring our organizations and our people in our town. And we do this throughout the year, and it never gets old, because our people never cease to amaze us in what they do and what they accomplish and how they contribute to this township. So having said that, I'd like to offer this resolution. Whereas the Nutley American dash East Intermediate All-Star Team has enjoyed an incredible Little League run, capturing titles in every year possible, and whereas the overall honors for their four years include the 2020 District 8 10-year-old champions, 2021 District 8 11-year-old champions, 2022 District 8 12-year-old champions, and 2023 District 8 champions, and Section 2 Intermediate Champions, and third in the state of New Jersey. And whereas the members of these four championship teams had 20 players in total on their rosters, Nicholas Beninato, Andrew Clinton, Gennaro Dovino, William Diaz, Brandon Gajuski, Kevin Gallagher, Alex Giella, Christopher Haynes, Evan Sebarowski, Salvatore Storacci, Devin Telciti, William Von Roth, and players who have played on each of the four teams are Evan Blanchard, Brian Dolegan, Matthew Ianatelli, and Aiden Kupinowitz, John McHemmies, Ryan Puleo, William Rodriguez, and Christian Sebastiano. And whereas the coaches of these teams include Christian Sebastiano, Anthony Haynes, Brian Dolegan, Mike Blanchard, Woody Sheenow, Sam Dotro, Dan McHemmies, Sal Storacci, Mike Gajuski, Mike Giella, Guillermo Rodriguez, who worked tirelessly to train and guide these athletes, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey join with the citizens of Nutley to honor and congratulate the members and coaches of the Nutley American dash East Intermediate All-Stars for their exceptional efforts and accomplishments. I very proudly offer this resolution.
I need a second.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
This is an incredible record. That's, that's an impressive run right there. To those of you who are, your baseball days are behind you, I encourage you to take this drive, take this championship attitude, and apply it to your everyday life, and you'll be just as successful in your everyday life as you are on the baseball field. Those of you who are continuing with your baseball career, I want to challenge you to continue the hard work, because the hard work's not over. I want to see you guys back here every year, and so continue to working hard. And don't forget to thank your parents and your families, because they sacrificed and supported you to get you to where you are, and they're going to continue to do so, because they want to see you succeed and be the best that you can be. I'd probably vote aye.
Commissioner Evans?
I will echo Commissioner Kelly's comments and just add, team sports are just wonderful things for our children and every generation. And when you think about all of the social dynamics that are going on around us today, understanding the value of, the values associated with teamwork and working together and being actually a family together, I think serves you throughout your adulthood. So I want to thank you all for your hard work. I want to thank you all for reminding me that probably in baseball, I probably had the record for the most strikeouts. And I don't think you get a trophy for that, but I think I held a record for it. But I also want to thank the coaches for, because of your leadership, the values that you displayed for these children and the parents, for all of your commitment to helping them. I gladly vote aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Thank you. I would also like to congratulate everyone. I coached down the American Little League field. My kids went through there. I know what it's like to rake the field, so coaches deserve, you know, all the best, too. Thank you for doing what you're doing, the parents driving the kids around. But I have to ask the kids a question. When is somebody going to hit my sign down there? I'm dying to give somebody free lunch to the team. So when we, when we sponsored that two years ago, my kids are like, you're crazy. You're going to be giving free lunches out every day. It's two years. So maybe I should double it up. Maybe I should give two free lunches to the first kid that hits it. So congratulations and hit the sign, please.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, before I vote, there's just one other thing that Commissioner Evans just reminded me of. You know, we can actually stream the games, all right, from the park now. So for parents or grandparents or aunts and uncles that, for whatever reason, can't make it to the field, all right, you can always watch them on TV. Once again, thank you, parents. Thank you to our players. We are so proud of you, and we just want you to continue on and continue to excel. I vote aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Yes, congratulations, guys. A great four-year run to your coaches who are here, some of them multiple times with multiple teams and multiple sports. Congratulations to you, to the parents sacrificing, driving them around everywhere. You know, the boys and girls should give them a hand also. And usually Commissioner Petracca says this, but look at the guy next to you, because 20 years from now, 30 years from now, he's going to be one of your best friends, and you'll never forget the years you spent together on that team, winning, laughing, crying. So congratulations, and I proudly vote aye.
Would the players and coaches please come up for photo?
One resolution, I have to.
Okay, I have a proclamation on behalf of the Board of Commissioners for the Kingsland Manor Historic Restoration Trust. Whereas the Kingsland Manor was built in around, built in around 1768 as a farmhouse by two brothers, John and James Walls, and whereas in 1790, Joseph Kingsland, grandson of Isaac Kingsland, completed the purchase of the Kingsland Manor from John and James Walls. And whereas in 1821, Joseph Kingsland passed away, leaving the Kingsland Manor to his son Joseph Jr. until his death in 1899. And whereas in 1909, Joseph's sisters sold the property to Dan McGinnity, a Chicago politician and lawyer, who along with Bob Fitzsimmons, used the building and grounds as a training site for pugilists. And whereas in 1927, Dan McGinnity's son Bernard Charles became a constable in the 3rd Ward of Nutley and opened the Speakeasy in the basement of the Kingsland Manor. And whereas Catherine Agnes McGinnity, wife of Dan McGinnity, ran the Kingsland Manor as the Nutley Private Hospital until 1938. And whereas from 1944 to 1974, the Kingsland Manor changed ownership multiple times, until in 1974, the Nutley Planning Board moved to purchase the property through Green Acres Funds. And whereas on May 7, 1974, the Township of Nutley Board of Commissioners adopted ordinance number 1812 entitled In Ordnance Created, Creating the Historic Restoration Trust of the Town of Nutley in the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, hereinafter referred to as the Historic Restoration Trust. And whereas the Township of Nutley agreed to lease the Kingsland Manor property to the Historic Restoration Trust, and whereas the focus of the Historic Restoration Trust is to raise and expend funds for the purpose of preservation and utilizing of the improvements commonly known as the Kingsland Manor. And whereas for the past 46 years, the trust has been faithful to the original design of the Manor, using Historic American Building Survey pictures, drawings, and descriptions as the basis for its restoration work. And whereas in 1978, the Kingsland Manor was added to the National Register of Historic Places and the New Jersey Register of Historic Places. And whereas in 2021, the Nutley Historic Preservation Committee added Kingsland Manor to the Register of Historic Places in Nutley. Whereas on Tuesday, May 7, 2024, the Historic Reservation Trust will be celebrating 50 years of service to the Kingsland Manor and the community of Nutley. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey applaud the Historic Restoration Trust for 50 years of service and commitment to preserving and protecting the historic value of the Kingsland Manor. Be further resolved that the Township of Nutley extends its sincere congratulations and appreciation to all the volunteers involved throughout the years for their commitment and dedication to the Kingsland Manor, and the citizens of Nutley proudly present the Historic Reservation Trust with this proclamation commemorating their 50th anniversary. Congratulations. Commissioners? Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, while you're making, come on, would you like to say a few words? Come on up. You absolutely can. Come on up. Mayor's okay?
Sure.
Mayor Scarpelli, Commissioner Tucci, Commissioner Petracca, Commissioner Evans, Commissioner Kelly, Township Attorney Bruno, Madam Clerk Pettis, and members of the Township of Nutley. Fifty years ago, Fred Van Steen, membership chairman of the Historic Restoration Trust of the Township of Nutley, made an appeal for new membership with these words. "We can be proud that our town of Nutley took the necessary steps to acquire the Kingsland Manor and prevent further desecration and infringement of this historic site. To this end, the Nutley Board of Commissioners has established, through a town ordinance, a Historic Restoration Trust to operate, maintain, and restore this home. This organization is now in full operation and is actively engaged in a diversity of projects. These include researching the history of the home, acquiring appropriate furnishings, restoring rooms back to their original grandeur, obtaining funds necessary to carry out the work, and in general, doing everything that is required to present Nutley with a home that, that, that will find an adoptive use for many years to come." And by an unusual coincidence, today is a historic and auspicious day. The trust was created by the Township Board of Commissioners on May 7, 1974, exactly 50 years to today, under ordinance number 1812, and followed two years of a determined effort by the township to purchase the Kingsland Manor and save it for future generations. Today's proclamation represents the recognition of the efforts of the township and our volunteers in restoring and maintaining Kingsland Manor over the past 50 years, and a continuing commitment by our trust to the preservation of this important Nutley homestead. I want to thank our trust partner, our township commissioners, past and present, for their foresight, leadership, and integrity in establishing the Kingsland Manor as a treasure to be enjoyed by all its citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you for preserving the history of the Kingsland Manor, because only if we recall our, our past will we have a clear path for our future. So thank you and your entire group for everything that you do, and the Kingsland Manor is a site that we're very proud of, and we continue working with you for many more years to come. Right. I, I know him well, yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, I was listening to the history lesson, and it reminded me of my, my dad. My dad, in the early years, was there to help, help straighten it out and help fix it and do all those things. And he was one of the things, he was very proud of the fact that Nutley took the time to do this. And it started to make me think about things that we've done. It's, you know, the town stepping up, we, we, we wouldn't have the park system today in Nutley if the town didn't step up to make that happen. We wouldn't be commemorating our veterans the way we, we are today if we didn't do that. So I think, you know, the town has a long history, and the Board of Commissioners, our predecessors and this board alike have a long history of recognizing and understanding that we need to preserve our past, we need to understand our roots in order to create a value structure for all of our residents, our new residents, and hopefully we'll be able to continue all of this and build it and make it even better in the next 50 years. So I'm so proud of the work that you've done. I'm grateful for the work that you've done, because we can only do part of it. So thank you.
Commissioner Petracca?
I think grateful is the word, because I have to say, I know it's a lot of work upkeeping that property, but it is just magnificent. It's really a part of Nutley. And I have to tell you, I want to thank each and every one of you for doing what you do. It is my absolute favorite place to go during Christmas. The way you guys decorate it and all that stuff, it's a beautiful building, it's old, and it's really what Nutley's all about. It's one of the few things that we really have left in town that's, you know, original. So my hat's off to you guys. You did a great job, and thank you for doing what you guys do.
Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. The Kingsland Manor and I have a long history. I grew up on Rutgers, right above Kingsland Park. And I remember when I went to Yanacost School, we, we took a field trip, and we, we walked down to the Kingsland Manor and took a tour, and it was, it always stuck with me. But for whatever reason, the thing that stuck out with me the most was, well, it was the tour guide at the time said, "Take a look at the floors. Look at how thick those floorboards are. You don't see those floorboards like that anymore." And for whatever reason, that, that stuck with me. And growing up in the area, I would always find my way into the park and find my way down towards the Niagara Falls of Nutley, which is right in front of the Kingsland Manor, and always have to take a moment to, to look and admire at the Manor. And, and that, that's because of your, your efforts and your predecessors' efforts to preserve that, that piece of property. And it's always something, you know, as a Nutleyite, to go, go to the park and look forward to seeing. And I could tell you today, I run through that park, not daily, but multiple times a week. And as I come up on the Kingsland Manor, it's a moment of peace in my pain and anguish as I'm, I'm struggling to continue my run and look at that Kingsland Manor. And so 50 years is a great accomplishment. I hope you continue to keep it going for 150 years, times 10, because every, every child in Nutley should be able to experience what I, what I had and see, see what the history of Nutley was like at the Kingsland Manor. So thank you and congratulations.
Let's get, let's take a picture. I'm going to send it back to Commissioner Tucci for one more resolution.
Okay, thank you again, Mayor. This, this last resolution, recognizing one of our outstanding groups in town, brings me great joy and a great sense of pride. This group has been here for a long time. They are absolutely a major part of the fabric of this community, and it's only just and right that we recognize them for all they do. This is just one of the things that they do. And I know in the coming days and months that they're going to be doing even more than they've done in the past, and that's sometimes hard to believe. So having said that, whereas the Benevolent and Protected Order of Elks has designated May 1 through May 7 as Youth Week to honor America's junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fitting recognition of their services to community, state, and nation, and whereas the Township of Nutley will sponsor and observance during the week in tribute to the junior citizens of this community, and whereas no event could be more deserving of our support and participation than one dedicated to these young people who represent the nation's greatest resource and who in the years ahead will assume the responsibility for the advancement of our free society. Whereas to achieve this worthy objective, we should demonstrate our partnership with youth, our understanding of their hopes and aspirations, and a sincere willingness to help prepare them in every way for the responsibilities and opportunities of citizenship. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mauro Gietucci, along with the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley in the State of New Jersey, do hereby dedicate the first week in May as Youth Week and urge all departments of government, civic, fraternal, and patriotic groups, and our citizens generally, to participate wholeheartedly in its, in its observance. I very proudly offer this resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Well, I guess I'll start it off again. Frank, before we, we ask everyone to come up, you folks have done so much for so many years, for so many in this town, that I can't begin to thank you for everything that you've done. And I know you, you every now and then go through a renaissance. You renew your dedication to the town, you renew your membership, you elect new officers, you're bringing new ideas forward. And I just want you to know that even though some of us may be a bit quiet about it, we recognize what you're doing, and we appreciate everything that you do. Congratulations.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes. Frank, under, I know under your, your leadership now, the Elks will take on a new direction. If you are able to bring only part of the energy and commitment that you bring to the Township of Nutley, to the leadership at the Elks, they're going to be a whole lot better for it. The Township of Nutley is grateful for everything that you do. We count on you so much, although I would like to have the tiles changed in my office, but.
Frank, you don't have to listen to that part.
But, you know, and I think about the Elks, and you think about the history of the Elks. I hope that by what you're doing, one, obviously for youth, but for all the things that you do, and being a civic organization that has its, its foundations, you know, in its support for our country, for our citizenry, and the care that you bring to the table, that you'll help us with all the new residents in town, rekindle this desire of participation in volunteerism that's so desperately needed and important to the township. So I congratulate all of you, and Frank, I look forward to your leadership.
Commissioner Petracca?
I'd just like to say that there is no place on earth like the Elks. When I was, my, and my mom and dad, God rest my mother's soul, they belonged to the Elk back then with Mr. Salabini and Larry Cornavella, I think, was the exalted ruler at the time. And that's when I learned how to dial 411 and get the Nutley Elk's telephone number, because my mother and father dropped me off at my grandmother's house in East Orange, and I was a mama's boy, and I called up to Elk, and I think Larry Cornavella answered the phone, and he was like, "Alfons, it's Halloween party. Your mother's not coming to get you." Which he did. But I got my first trophy at the Elks. And Mauro said one word that is entrenched to me. You guys are really, really the fabric of Nutley. It's, you think of Nutley, you think of the Elks. I've had so many fond memories. Whatever I could do to help in the future, I will always be there for the Elks as well. So thank you for all you do, and congratulations to you, Frank, as well.
Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. When, when I, I think of the Elks, invariably I think of how they're integral parts of the fabric of this community. I always find myself there throughout the year, whether it's at the end of the St. Patrick's Day Parade, the, the Wild Game Nights, or just, you know, having a drink at the bar with some of the members. It's, it's a piece of this community, and having an organization like the Nutley Elks in this community makes all of our jobs on, on this board easier to help improve and maintain the, the community in, in the way that it is, and make it such a great community. And so you guys are tremendous assets to the community. And was that your installation that night, Frank? And I can tell that you have the full weight and support of the Elks behind you. And I can tell you, the way you do great things in Nutley, you're going to continue to do great things with the Elks, and I'm looking forward to seeing the, the next year unfold.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd just like to congratulate the Elks on all you do for the township. You always participate in our parades. You, you know, what you do at Camp Moore. You always participate in our parades. You know, what you do at Camp Moore for the disabled youth. It's just inspiring all the work you do, mostly quietly. And it's nice to recognize you in this way. So congratulations.
Please come up. We do. Okay. Thanks, guys.
Frank, did you want to say something?
Let's move on to reports. Commissioner Evans.
I have a code enforcement report for the month of March and first quarter.
Bill's, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. We have a bill list from May 7, 2024, Public Affairs, $88,762.42 Revenue and Finance, $7,814,029.75 Public Safety, $102,886.82 Public Works, $580,676.51 Parks and Public Property, $858,955.84 Water Utility, $107,625.29 Payroll, regular payroll, April 26, 2024, regular payroll total, $929,022.51 Overtime payroll total, $57,721.90 Retro payroll total, $170,098.48 Total payroll, $1,156,842.89 For grant total of $8,709,779.52
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
What about comment on agenda items only? Would anybody like to be heard or? Seeing done, let's move on to ordinance introductions. Mr. Evans, Commissioner Tucci.
Let me do it. Ordinance number 3550, ordinance providing for equipment purchase and exterior infrastructure improvements and related services in and about the Township of Nutley for approximating $400,000. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with a notice required by law and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on June 6, 2024. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Let's move on to public hearings. Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number 3547. Basically what this ordinance does, it puts us into compliance with the State Department of Environmental Protection as far as our tree ordinance is concerned. And I'd like to open up the program to any comments.
Anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3547?
I move we close the public hearing.
Sir, second.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye. I think somebody wants to speak though.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you wanted to speak. Please come on.
We appreciate commissioners that you've taken up the ordinance and approve it. Nutley is great heritage is its trees. And we hope we will continue to keep our forest going in this town. There was an article in the New York Times.
Give it to the clerk. Give it to the clerk.
This article was written by a woman in Nashville, but it could describe Nutley as well. We started an organization about two years ago to encourage the tree preservation, the Nutley Tree Rescue Organization. We now have 600 people who participate with us in this organization. So there is keen interest in town about our trees. This article encourages the trees for our health and for all kinds of reasons keeping the water controlled. And what she makes out there is we need to encourage our shade trees. We don't really plant enough shade trees. We have many plots in town. Many households have lawns out front that are empty. I think it'd be a wonderful thing if we encouraged them to have a shade tree, not an ornamental. Ornamentals do very little for our health. And put in shade trees on all the empty plots. It is allowed. It has been done already, but it could be encouraged. And it could come from your commissioners to encourage that in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Graham. Anybody else want to be heard on this ordinance?
Hello, everyone. My name's David Showmaker. My wife and I, Apple, recently moved to Nutley about six months ago. And one of the reasons we moved here is because it has a beautiful shade canopy of trees, old growth trees. I grew up in Arlington, Virginia, has a beautiful, it's very similar to Nutley, also a suburb of a large city. And I just wanted to lend my voice and support to what Graham was saying. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to be heard on ordinance number 3547?
I am the Lorax. I speak for the trees. No, I live in Tin Town for over 25 years. And what I wanted to share beyond my love of trees, to reiterate what these fine folks have said, is that Nutley is known for its trees. I grew up, and my husband and I both grew up at the Jersey Shore. And when we go down to where we're from and people we meet know that we live in Nutley, they say, oh, Nutley has always had such beautiful trees. We've had many people say that to us. And we look at each other and we say, well, it used to. It used to, but it doesn't anymore. And I'd like to know what's being done to replace a lot of these trees that are coming down. On my street, I live on Hillside Avenue, and in front of my own house, a tree was planted by the town, but unfortunately, it's a calorie pear, which anyone can Google very quickly and realize that it's a very bad tree. Towns plant it because it grows quickly and it's inexpensive. But it's a tree that fractures very easily in storms and in wind. And with climate change that's happening now, that's more and more frequent. And I'm just waiting for that tree to come down on my car. So we had oaks here before. Those are the shade trees that Graham spoke of. Not these junky calorie pears and sidewalk trees that have been put in. Lastly, I'd like to say that there is a local artist who lives here in Nutley. And I hired her to do a very special, unique painting in my home. My husband has an office in our house and there's an archway that goes into his office. And on the inside of the archway, I asked her to paint symbols of our story, of our life together. And at the very top of the arch, separating our past from our present, she put the oak leaves and the acorns to represent Nutley. And it's very beautiful. And I'd just like our town to stay that way and become more beautiful. Make it our goal to put those trees back, please.
Thank you. Anybody else want to be heard on ordinance number 3547?
I wasn't planning on coming up here, but I just wanted to take a moment to thank everybody that showed up at the Arbor Day Celebration we had at the Nutley Museum. Very much appreciated. Nutley Tree Rescue is like a group of citizens that are like-minded and concerned about Nutley trees. And Frank DeMayo, I'd like to thank for helping out immensely. He's been being involved on multi-levels and is always like a text message or a quick call away for anybody in the town that has any concern whatsoever. So I've noticed a big change over the last two years and I just wanted to thank everybody in the room for like recognizing and helping create awareness and make some positive changes. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else want to be heard on ordinance number 3547? Commissioner?
Yes. Thank you, one and all, for your comments. We'll absolutely take them under advisement. We plant what we plant based upon the guidance that our town forester lays out for us. All right. And we have certain restrictions from utility companies, right, and other areas that we need to conform with. But wherever and whenever we can, we try to plant as many shade trees as humanly possible. But thank you again for all your comments. We hear what you're saying and we will do everything in our power to hopefully comply. Thank you.
Mayor, may I make a few words?
Sure.
Mr. Hardy, is this the, is this the, the article you read at the Arbor Day Celebration?
He can't hear you.
It is. I agree with you. This absolutely can be Nutley. And I just want to say that that Arbor Day Celebration was eye-opening for me, especially the, the before and after comparisons on Google Maps where you can see in black and white, a tree there and not a tree there. And it's shocking. And I know that everyone on this board feels the same way. And we want to make sure that we maintain the shade trees and improve shade trees. And personally, for my own edification, I looked into research into how it's possible if you can move mature trees into Nutley to maintain that shade tree cover. And so this is something that the board takes very seriously and we're going to continue in the future. Thank you.
Commissioner, just for your edification, that's something that we absolutely do. And wherever we can plant the large oaks and the larger shade trees, we always try to put them back there. But unfortunately, some of our older shade trees are in areas that have grown inappropriate for them and actually present a hazard. So we need to be very mindful of that because while we all love trees and we all love our tree canopy and our urban forests here in Nutley and we meticulously maintain our 110 acres of parkland, all right, we need to do it in a very methodical way. And that's what we're working towards. It's not a quick fix, but it's something that we need to address over time and we absolutely will. So thank you very much for your comments.
Close.
Are you a second?
What else? I'll move the ordinance. We close the hearing?
We need a second on the close.
Second. Second on the close.
Yes. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Before I vote, I would just like to say I do love trees as well. Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Hold on, Lenny, one second. Mike, I'm reminded of the conversation that we had about possibly looking at Van Riper and other places to establish little specimen areas so that residents who might want to put a tree up can see what kind of trees could be on their own private property. And I was just thinking about what Commissioner Tucci had said. There are restrictions that are coming up that weren't there when these trees were first planted. The electrical lines and some of the roadways and the improvements of town have made certainly areas difficult to put a large tree because of their root structure and what they do. But there are areas, many areas, where if residents were more aware of their options in selecting a tree. So the idea of setting up a place where people can go look, the black maples, the oaks, and the various things, that could actually help your organization build awareness, right? And I think, you know, that would be actually helpful to the cause. And I think it's important to point out is, how many years now we've been Tree City?
35 years.
So we've been designated Tree City USA for 35 years. So while we're looking at what we need to do to restore, we are doing a lot of good things to have a national designation. So I gladly vote aye.
And we've planted close to 1,500 trees as of our last living memorial in Arbor Day Celebration. And it's a mix because what we don't want to do is get locked into one type of tree because in the event that there is a blight, you lose that whole species. So again, it's a work in progress. It's something that we take a lot of pride in and we thank everyone for their comments and we definitely hear what you say. Thank you.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako. Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Let's move on to ordinance number 3548. Commissioner Evans.
Yes, Mayor. This is a public hearing on a capital improvement ordinance related to improvements for the, actually, front of the town hall.
Anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3548?
Move the close.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Let's move to resolutions. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two on for this evening. The first one is, it's just simply to note that we've applied for a grant. So in the event that we awarded the grant, we can accept it. And this is part of my push to find another well instead of going to the taxpayers to fund our budget. We go to different grants. So whereas the Township of Nutley has applied for a grant in the amount of $74,664, $74,664 through the New Jersey Department of Health, the Office of Local Public Health, Strengthening Local Public Health Capacity Program 2025, from which funds will be used to strengthen public health capacity and enhance outbreak preparedness by implementing salary reimbursements for designated personnel installing much-needed storage units and shelving in all clinic areas. And therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey formally approves the grant application for strengthening Local Public Health Capacity Program 2025. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
The last one I have on for this evening is it's for the advertisement of bids for the collection of solid waste. We've come towards the end of our five-year period of our solid waste removal contract. And so we need to advertise for bids so we can continue to remove the waste in a expedient and safe manner. Whereas due to the time requirement of 60 days in bid advertising, the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, has determined that it's necessary before the Township Clerk to advertise for sealed bids on May 23, 2024 in this Newark Star-Ledge of the Nutley Sun for collection of removal and disposal of solid waste, bulk waste, vegetative waste, leaves, and grass clippings. Whereas it is the desire of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey to authorize and ratify the actions of the Township Clerk in advertising for said bids. And therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the actions of the Township Clerk in so advertising for sealed bids for collection, removal, and disposal of solid waste, bulk waste, vegetative waste, leaves, and grass clippings on May 23, 2024, as aforementioned, be and are hereby authorized and ratified and be it further resolved that as advertised, said bids, as may be received in accordance with said advertisement, shall be publicly opened and read on Wednesday, July 24, 2024, in the Commissioned Chambers, Township Hall, Kennedy Drive, at 11:00 a.m. prevailing time. prevailing time. And I want to thank, uh, Mayor Scarpelli and his department in, in helping us put this together. Thank you. Uh, so I move the, the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yeah. Before I vote, I just want to thank Commissioner Kelly for giving us the opportunity to comment on this because there were some areas that I felt needed clarification and I did in fact discuss those with the township attorney. And I know he discussed those with you commissioner to make sure that this package is as complete as it could possibly be. So I vote aye.
And I want to thank you for your expertise. Commissioner Tucci, I know you've been a town manager elsewhere and you've, you've brought forth your, uh, your, your issues that occurred in other towns, so we don't experience them here in Nutley. So thank you.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my first resolution is, uh, is a special resolution. Uh, it's, uh, recognizing the 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, uh, being May 5th through May 11th. Whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of a local government exists throughout the world, whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk has professional standing and is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at both the county and state level. And whereas the municipal clerks are subject to a code of conduct which makes them ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering, rendering equal service to all. Whereas municipal clerk serves as the information resource on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops and annual meetings of their state, uh, county and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the contributions and accomplishments of this office within our municipality. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley hereby recognize the week of May 5th through 11th as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Aleni Pettis, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary, uh, dedication to the communities they represent. Uh, I would, I would add that, uh, uh, we're, we're very fortunate because our clerk is, one, recognized, uh, broadly throughout the county as well as the state. It's amazing how she's on a first-name basis with a lot of people that enables us to get thing done, to get things done. And for us, for as a board, it helps us, uh, because when people come in and they have applications for affairs and things that they want to do and they're not compliant or they're late or they're short on time, the clerk is able to break through all of that, uh, and deal with all the authorizations that are there. Uh, and I would include in this, uh, Sessi, uh, our, our deputy clerk for the service that she provides. Uh, so we're very fortunate, uh, to have in Nutley, someone and a team that aspires to the high standards, uh, of that of being known as a professional municipal clerk. Uh, I move it.
Commissioner Kelly?
Uh, Madam Clerk and, uh, Madam Deputy Clerk, uh, you guys are incredible in what you do. Uh, I, anytime I pick up the phone and call you, it's an immediate response. Uh, it's, it's as if I'm the Commissioner of, uh, the Department of Finance. Uh, but, uh, you, you treat all of us as if equally and fairly and you, there cannot be enough said about what you, you and your staffs do. And I, I know I say thank you every time I, I go to you, but, uh, it's important to say it again. So thank you for all you do for this town and, uh, thank you. Yeah, absolutely. I probably would mo, but proudly vote aye.
Commissioner Patrako?
It's my turn already?
Commissioner Evans, I'm sorry. Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Evans?
I like to echo, um, Commissioner Kelly's thoughts too. Cece, Lenny, you guys have become part of my family. You just guys do a great town in Nutley. You guys look out for everybody and you are very quick to respond. I want to apologize to both of you for not responding as quick as you, you do to us, but, and calling me, but you guys are a great team and I'm glad that you guys are here. I vote aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes. Before I vote, I'd just like to echo some of the remarks that previously made. Uh, we are very fortunate to have the team that we have here, Aleni, Sessi and all the others, uh, that, that support you and what you do. You do an outstanding job. I'm not sure that most people understand exactly what it is you do and how you keep our records and our contracts straight and comply with all of the, our, our public bidding records and everything else and all of the, all of the business that goes on here. Uh, so I want to thank you first and I very proudly vote aye.
Thank you. Commissioner, uh, Mayor Scarpelli?
Yeah. Aleni and, uh, Sessi, you guys, uh, not only support the Board of Commissioners, but you're the face of the town. You're the people that, uh, our citizens see first. So, uh, we appreciate all the help that you give us and, uh, how cordial you are to the, to the residents who come up to that desk.
Thank you.
I vote aye proudly.
Aleni, even though I read it, I would like to vote aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just curious. I, I think I heard in John an offer to trade seats. Is that what I heard? Didn't you hear that? I, I heard that.
I hear a lot of things.
No, I did not make that offer.
That's the best comment of the night.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, the treasurer is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of water charges in the amount of one thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirteen cents for blocks 6401, Lot 28. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Uh, the treasurer is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of property taxes in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars for the two lot, for the, uh, lot and block 4201, Lot 1. Uh, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And, uh, finally, the treasurer is authorized to refund overpayments for tax charges in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-six cents for block 8203, Lot 17. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Patrako?
This is a resolution authorizing the Township and Nutley Office of Emergency Management to accept funds from a sub-grant award of the federal fiscal year 2023 Emergency Management Agency Assistance Program funding and for the Chief Financial Officer of the Township of Nutley to amend the budget and certify the availability of funds. I'm just going to jump around to save a little time because it is quite long. The Chief Financial Officer and Director of Emergency Management are authorized to sign the appropriate sub-grant award documents. The copies of this resolution shall be forwarded to the New Jersey State Police Office of Emergency Management, the City Business Administrator and Chief Financial Officer and County Division of Emergency Management and Office of Charger. I'll move it as written.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Lenny, your mic is very low.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Is that what it is? Very low. Yeah. Can't hear.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property determined due to unforeseen circumstances, families had to cancel participation in programs offered. And whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has determined a need to refund families, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the treasurer is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amounts listed below. For 22 Edgar Place, for Camp Nutley, in the amount of $400 for 2024, and 32 Henry Sheet, also for Camp Nutley, in the amount of $800 for 2024. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the freedom that we as people experience in the United States is due to the bravery, dedication and bloodshed given by the armed forces. And whereas the armed forces of the United States have made sacrifices as well as their families to ensure our liberties and our safety. And whereas Congress designated May as National Military Appreciation Month in 1999 to ensure the nation was given the chance to publicly show their appreciation for troops past and present. And whereas the month of May was selected for acknowledging and celebrating patriotism because during this time, we celebrate victory in Europe, VE Day, Military Spouse Day, Loyalty Day, Armed Forces Day and Memorial Day. And whereas we honor, remember, appreciate and recognize all those who have served and are currently serving our great nation, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey join with the citizens of Nutley to celebrate and honor all of our military members and our veterans for the sacrifices they have made and for their outstanding dedication to our country and to our community. I proudly move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
I just want to say, you know, there's a lot of politicians out there who, especially during election season, grandstand and cater to veterans. But after the election and the dust settles, veterans need something. They go away, disappear. But I can honestly say that this Board of Commissioners is steadfast behind our veterans. They support our veterans. In addition to reading this resolution, Commissioner Tucci maintains our, our veterans monuments. He maintains our, our Veterans Memorial Park, uh, which was dedicated to veterans after World War I. Every tree in that park, all 400, some out of them, represents an individual soldier who served during the war. And, and we have our veteran monuments in, in that park to, to memorialize all those who paid the ultimate sacrifice. Commissioner Evans, uh, year, year-round, uh, make sure that veterans get their tax breaks. He makes sure that they, uh, they, they get their, uh, 100% exemption if they're disabled. Uh, Mayor Scarpelli, you, we, we just launched the Hometown Hero Banner Program, uh, just, just before this commission meeting and, uh, your, your department's going to be marching down the avenue, putting those banners up, honoring our veterans, our heroes. And Commissioner Patrako, you're, you're, you're almost as if you are a veteran yourself. You're, you're such an advocate. Any, anything that the veterans need, you, you're, you're ready to provide. And, and so as a veteran and, and a member of this board, I want to thank all, all of you for, for what you do for veterans and, uh, and my, my department included. Uh, we, we do mental health counseling, Veterans Day Ruck March. Uh, it's, it's 24/7 here in Nutley for our veterans and so I proudly vote aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, Commissioner, I'd like to thank you for your service first and foremost. And like the Commissioner said, this is a team project. All right? Our Veterans Affairs Bureau is under the Public Affairs Department. However, participation, it goes across all departments and we're happy to do it. I proudly vote aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations. Nutley Family Service Bureau, license number 26245050 raffle, license number 2724 on premises merchandise raffle to, both to be held Saturday, June 8th, 2024. Nutley High School Volleyball Booster Club, license number 2824 on premises tricky tray raffle to be held Sunday, June 3rd, 2024. Friends of Nutley Library, license number 2924 on premises merchandise raffle to be held Wednesday, May 22nd, 2024. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk in the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved, that the municipal clerk is authorized to issue said license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. If anybody would like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening, seeing none?
Mayor, one, one announcement please before we close.
You know what? I skipped announcements.
Your announcements. That's your prerogative.
All right.
I like purpose. I'm sure. I'd just like to remind everyone that on Friday, uh, May 10th, from 6:00 to 10:00, we are holding our Rally for Hope. This is the successor to the previous, uh, cancer, uh, event that we, that we had. Uh, the Rally for Hope is the, the first major event for our Greater Nutley Cancer Foundation, whereby we will be, uh, directing, uh, our resources to Nutley people and friends of Nutley people and people that have a connection to Nutley. So I, I would, uh, I would encourage everyone to please participate in that. And, uh, Mayor, I, I would be remiss if I didn't add my voice to what was previously said. Uh, I was a little hesitant before when we did the resolution about the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks, not to sound self-serving, all right? And to praise one of my own, but I do have the highest aspirations for Frank DeMayo, who is my right-hand man in the Parks Department. So Frank, congratulations. I was proud to be there when you were sworn in and I look forward to working with you and bringing the Elks back to the prominence that it once held. So congratulations. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Uh, just, uh, we, we've had a lot going on. The, we've had the mobile DMV unit, you know, here last week and then on Monday, uh, we went down to, to take a look at it. I was really taken back by the number of vehicles that were there online that was constant to go get their car inspected. Uh, I, I wasn't sure what kind of turnout it would be, but it was, it was a major turnout. Uh, I know the clerk's office was part of John's, uh, Everly for vaccinating dogs and that looked like it was a, a great turnout, you know, to see everybody there, uh, to take, to comply and actually be able to save money on, on their, on their vaccination. But more importantly, we were able to get a lot of the dog and cat licenses, uh, registrations out. And, and Lenny, what are we up to in terms of the dogs?